Mr. Combs.
President.
President.
Ms. Nelson.
Present.
Mr. Reclu.
Present.
Ms. Sebacher. Mr. Stone.
Present.
Mr. Washington. Six council members present for a minute.
I turn mine off. Let us pray together. Our heavenly Father, we thank you first for the beauty of this day. All across the heartland, Lord, today we've had a reprieve from the winter's schedule and fully headed into spring, and for this we're grateful. We thank you, Lord, and I begin worldwide tonight to remember all of our battle groups, all of our troops that are deployed on foreign bases throughout the world, and for our naval fleets patrolling the Mediterranean, the Red Sea, the Indian Ocean, and the Taiwan Strait. These are the keepers of freedom and liberty for many parts of our world, and for their service we are grateful. In addition, for our Marines and Armies that are stationed on bases throughout Europe, Asia, and the continent of Africa. Keep them safe from harm and danger in the diligence of their duties. Closer to home, the state of Missouri has over 200 National Guard and at least 22 state highway patrolmen that are deployed on the southern border. These officers volunteered for that duty as a commitment for our state, and answering that call, Lord, we're proud of them and we pray for them and all who are enhancing the U.S. Border Patrol and the immigration and custom enforcement officers. In our own community, Lord, I'm very grateful for MoDOT and Fulton Police. In my neighborhood, we've had a change at Route Z and Wood Street. It's a good, positive change. It'll probably really enhance the safety of that particular thoroughfare with schools on both sides of Route Z. Thank you, Lord, today, for their patience in helping all of us adjust to a new intersection, and we just pray, Lord, that the traveling public will remain grateful. On behalf of those that are part of our city family tonight, I want to remember the family of Mike Robertson, that is the son of Mary and Richard Reclu, our council lady. In addition, I want to pray for the family of Shirley West. She is the mother of councilman, former councilman, Mike West, and her service was today. For all of this and beyond, our city family, any life, any need, any affliction, any grief, just comfort as only the presence of our Lord can do. For this session tonight and for those that have come to present already, and any work that will be done, any discussions that are held, and the community participants that are here to share, bless them. We're better when our community is with us. Guide this session. Bless our mayor, council persons, all of our commission and board members, our supervisors that supervise the city departments, and every boot on the ground every day that keeps our community both stable, safe, and moving forward. Thank you, Lord, tonight, for blessing us all. We pray this through Christ our Lord. Amen. Face the flag. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Privilege, sir. Privilege.
Okay, as usual, we'll have any comments from visitors? If you want to make a comment, please come to the podium, give us your name and address. Seeing no one coming forward, we'll move on. We will have two public hearings this evening. For the purpose of considering the reclassification of tract of land located at 303 Clay Mine in Fulton, Missouri, from its present zoning designation of R1 residential to R2 residential. The format tonight will, of the hearing, will be as follows. I will issue three calls for anyone wishing to speak in opposition, then three calls for anyone wishing to speak in favor. I will declare the first public hearing open. Is there anyone, first call, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, I'll issue second call. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, I'll issue third call. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in opposition of this matter? Seeing no one, I will issue three calls for anyone wishing to speak in favor of this matter. First call. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of this matter? Seeing no one, I'll issue the second call. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of this matter? Seeing no one, I'll issue the third call. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of this matter? Seeing no one, I declare this, the first public hearing closed. Now we'll have the second, and this is for the purpose of considering the reclassification of tract of land located at 707 West Chestnut Street in Fulton, Missouri, from its present zoning designation of R1 residential to R2 residential. I will now declare, declare the second public hearing open. As the first one, we will proceed with the same agenda. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in opposition of this matter? Seeing no one, is there anyone present who wishes to speak in opposition of this matter? And the third and final call, is there anyone present who wishes to speak in opposition of this matter? Seeing no one, we'll move on to, anyone wishing to speak in favor of this matter? That's the first call. Second call, is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of this matter? Seeing no one, third call, is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of this matter? Seeing no one, I declare the second public hearing closed. We'll move to the main agenda. Next, we'll have the approval of the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to remove anything from that agenda? Seeing no one, can I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
Very good. Any, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, would you read the appointments?
Sure.
For those that are watching us through streaming and then later?
The first appointment is Les Hudson as an alternate on the Board of Adjustment for an open seat partial term to expire in 2027. And the second appointment is Bill Ernst as an alternate on the Board of Adjustment for the open seat partial term to expire in 2028. Okay, thank you. All right, we have a motion on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. We have no unfinished business at this time and no new business. We will move on to council concerns. Councilman Henchy.
Mr. Mayor, I have no concerns, but I would like to, again, appreciate, give it extended appreciation to our city engineer and all of his support, including the chief of police and, and all the people that supported him in getting this four-way stop going on Wood Street and Highway Z. I think it will be a big improvement to our community, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Reclu.
Yes, I, one issue I've had off and on for many years, if you drive through town and you're trying to find an address, the houses, half the houses don't have numbers on them. I don't know how the police and the fire department find some of these places. If you own a home, could you please put the address on the house so that they can find in case there's an emergency? I've been driving around looking for these properties and things that we're dealing with, and some of the addresses you can't find around on the houses, and that's one of the things that I feel we are lacking in too, make sure the address properly on the property, so if there's an emergency, you can.
I couldn't agree more.
And that's all I have.
I know both police and fire have difficulties from time to time. Councilman Stone.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there has not been a meeting of the Historic Preservation Commission. Our next meeting will be in next month, the month of April. Do not have.
Ms. Stone, if I can correct you, it's actually March 20th will be our next meeting.
The actual regular schedule. Thank you. I thought we were going every other month. Okay, thank you very much. Never mind. The next meeting will be next week, not next month. No concern, but I, I raise the challenge to our wonderful city engineer to now look at the intersection of Ravine and Business 54 and continue those conversations with MoDOT on a possible four-way stop at that location. They always tell us no, but that doesn't mean we can't keep asking. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Luther.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we did have a airport advisory board meeting last week. Very good attendance by all and our constituents in the airport folks. Big picture, we discussed the upcoming runway lighting project, looking at different ways to calculate the rate increases even for future possible changes of rates. We discussed snow removal policies, discussed accounting info and some long-term actions we can take, working together to work through those accounting issues for, hopefully for better future improvements based on the cash flow. Kyle, anything else I'm missing? Big picture was. Was very appreciative. We got good feedback at the end of that meeting on how appreciative they were of the teamwork between the city and the airport. But that was good feedback to hear that, you know, we're open, we're listening, we're trying to help, and trying to work together to build a better facility out there for everybody involved, so good to hear that feedback. Concern-wise, definitely Reverend kind of hit it on the nail on the head with the, the community is adjusting to the Wood Street, Route Z, new intersection, but the adjustment has brought up safety concerns. I was at the YMCA Board of Directors meeting yesterday where they mentioned there's been several people just driving right through the stop signs, they're not used to it. I have kind of mentioned it to Kyle, saying, well, what can we do to help still alert people of the change because it's new? And it sounds like Kyle's already got some thing, working with the Public Safety Commission, maybe some potentials we can do to help alleviate those concerns until everyone gets adjusted to it, so hopefully we can make some, take some action on that to prevent any further safety concerns out there, so appreciate Kyle's leadership on that. And then, I think we had some possible changes to our calendar. I learned about, discuss that?
Yeah, so on our calendar, on our website, it's specifically limited at this point to city events, city of Fulton, let me explain that. So governing events like Parks and Rec, or whether it's a board and commission meeting or a council meeting, we were worried and we've had some feedback that people were a little confused of what events we are hosting. So we have removed those events from our website, and we encouraged somebody to create a Google Calendar around the city so that all those events can be shared.
Thank you. And that may be an opportunity, even the, working with the chamber or other affiliation that come over the community calendar, but thanks for that clarification.
You're welcome.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Councilman Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only, the only concern I have, I think we've had a discussion about making a digital display of the city or something, I think we need to look into that a little bit more. Park Board will be meeting this Thursday, so.
Councilwoman Nelson.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The utility board has not met. We do meet at the end of the month before the next council meeting, so I'll have an update at that point. I second everything about Highway Z, the stop sign. I've heard a lot of people have been running it. I know I've seen the police department out there in the mornings trying to mitigate that, and so I really appreciate that. I know I've seen people sitting kind of there at St. Peter's, so I really appreciate the work that's going into, to helping that situation from all of our departments. Since we're asking for roundabouts and stop signs, I think that we also maybe need to consider one at Tennyson and Mocain Road. I know that's been brought up before, and I know that that's more than just the city involved, but I definitely would love to see something in the future, you know, works on that. So other than that, I have no concerns, and thank you for the hard work that goes into everything that we do.
Thank you all. I just have briefly, would like to urge all of our citizens to please do your research on our upcoming tax, and by all means, if you aren't registered, I know last night I was at a meeting and there were some people not registered there yet, and I don't know what the cutoff on that is. I didn't know that, do you?
For registering to vote, it's probably faster than.
Okay. So I urge them to, to please do your research, know what you're voting for and who you're voting for, and what they did for our cities and that's brought us where we are today, and we're moving forward. I think we have a great council, we're moving forward, and we're working together, and that's what it's going to take, and I hope we can continue to do that. So I might urge everybody, though, to get out and vote. This is one of the most important elections, just because it's your local people, the people that you can go to their house and you can voice your opinion, or your, or your issue, or you see them on the street, they know you, you know them, you know, this is, it's very important, I think, our local elections, more than our state and our federal. I mean, yeah, you can talk to some of those people, but these are your neighbors, your friends, and so it's very important to get out and vote. Okay, very good. We'll move on to resolutions. Councilwoman Nelson, would you read Resolution 3527, the Visi Sewer Contract Renewal?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 3527, Visi Sewer Contract Renewal. A resolution, resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to the fifth and final renewal of the contract with Visi Sewer of Missouri, LLC, for sewer evaluation and rehabilitation services and establishing an effective date. Make a motion, we pass Resolution number 3527 at this council meeting.
Thank you. This is just a renewal contract. We've used them for quite some time. They've did a lot of work for us. Do we have any questions? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Councilwoman Nelson, would you read the next one?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Resolution 3528, Real Estate Purchase Agreement.
Resolution 3528, Real Estate Purchase Agreement. A resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to execute a real estate contract to purchase a piece of property located in Fulton, Missouri, and establish an effective date. Make a motion, we pass Resolution 3528 at tonight's council meeting.
Very good. Do we have any questions? We did discuss this at great length. Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Okay, we'll give Councilwoman Nelson a break here. Have Resolution 3529 read by Councilman Henchy.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 3529, Consulting Services Contract. A resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to a contract with Platt Landing Utility Services, LLC, plus of Parkville, Missouri, for consulting and engineering services to assist with the I-70 pipeline crossing and establishing an effective date. I make a motion to adopt Resolution number 3529 at this council meeting.
Very well. Gerald, do you want to say anything about this? I mean, we've talked about it many times. This is, and correct me if I'm wrong, this is part of the estimated 1.4. This is just the consulting end of it, am I correct?
That is correct, and we took this to the utility board, and they recommended it, and we bring it before you all with their blessing. When we applied for some grant money about a year and a half ago, we went through the process of interviewed engineers, and Ted Christensen, actually, he won that, that event. So now that we're going to go ahead and try to replace that, we stayed with Ted since we already had, went through all the processes, so this, there's three different ways we're looking at doing it, so this does not include, I want to be sure everybody understands that this does not include the inspection that Ted would probably have to do, but he couldn't price it because we haven't picked which way of the three directions we're going to go, so that's, that's where we're at. Anybody has any questions?
Any question?
Where does this cross 70? Is this at Haddon area, or?
It's before we get to Haddon.
Okay.
It's before the, where the large equipment dealership is, is before you get to it. Okay?
Any further questions? We have a motion on the floor. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. This is going to be a project that we're going to be working on for a while. I understand that the three-lane may not start until late 2024, early '25, so we've got a ways to go with that. Okay, we'll move to ordinances. I, I had that on the tip of my tongue, and I thought, oh, I'll give you a break. I'll, I'll ask Councilman Luther to read Bill number 1705, rezoning on Clay Mine.
Bill number 1705, rezoning 303 Clay Mine Drive, an ordinance reclassifying under the zoning code, attractive land located at 303 Clay Mine Drive in Fulton, Missouri, and establishing an effective date. And make a motion to place Bill number 1705 for second reading at the next regularly scheduled council meeting.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. Do we have discussion? I think we've discussed this several times. Very good, all in favor of Bill 1705? Please say yes.
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 Oppose? We'll move that on to next reading at the next meeting. Okay, Councilman Washington, would you read Bill 1706, the rezoning of 77, uh, 707, West Chestnut Street?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill number 1706, rezoning, uh, uh, Bill number 1706, rezoning 707 West Chestnut Street. An ordinance reclassifying under the zoning code, attractive land located at 707 West Chestnut Street.
Chestnut Street in Fulton, Missouri, and establish an effective date. I make a motion to place Bill Number 1706 for the second reading at the next regularly scheduled council meeting.
Second.
Very well. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. We do have a, a need for an executive session. I don't think it'll take too long, but... We have a couple announcements first. Next meeting is going to be March 26th, and for your old information, that's when we'll have the second and third reading. Election Day is coming up quickly, and that's going to be April the 2nd. Polls open at 6:00 until 7:00. We do have spring cleanup week taking place on April the 8th through the 12th, and that'll be along regular pickup routes. And if you have any questions about that, please call our Solid Waste Department. On the 24th, we'll have the annual cleanup day. That is a Saturday. No, it's our 24th annual. It's going to be the April 13th, which is a Saturday, and that will, Park, Parks and Rec usually does a great job at that, and Clay can cook some mean hot dogs, so...
Mr. Mayor?
So if you want to get involved in that, why, uh, contact Parks and Rec. Yes, sir?
I was just pausing. Question, in the past, we always have someone, talking about spring cleanup, tires, old tires, do we have anybody that's, we used to have a place where we'd regrow tires and to be disposed of? Is there anybody in our community that's doing that and maybe a place that we have to dispose of? How many charge them? I'm just curious. In the past, we had that?
I, I don't, I don't think we can take tires. I think the, some of the tire dealers in town do, but I think they charge you something for that. But I don't know that we have an out, and I, I know what you're saying, we used to do that. But I think the state has probably passed some laws that the tires have to be disposed of in such a manner that we don't have access to that without, I don't even know if we have access to it. They have people come by and take, take the tires. A lot of them go to, don't go to landfills. They go and they're chopped up and they make playgrounds. Yeah, I, I just don't think we have, our, our solid waste has the ability to do that.
I believe Jeremy has something to share.
Jeremy has something to say on that.
Oh, yeah.
Wendy was in my office for a long time. If what I remember is correct, if you cut the sides out of them, they can actually go in the trash can. If you cut the side, they'll pick them up on spring cleanup. Cut the sides out, because then it can compact at the landfill.
Well, they really will. Okay.
Don't quote me on it, but that's what I was...
Thank you.
Yes, can we take action to validate that and get that communicated at the next council meeting?
Yeah.
If that isn't true, that'd be great. I hate to have a whole bunch of tires if it's not true.
Can we have a motion to move to executive session, please?
I make a motion to move the executive session.
Second.
Motion made and second to move to executive session. I thank you all for coming, and we will be moving into the other room. Oh, I'm sorry. Need a roll call.
Uh, Mr. Luther?
Yes?
Ms. Nelson, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. walking disc?
Yes.